Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Frank Smith.
Jason Pereski.
If everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have one upcoming meeting date for December 17th, 2019, and we have not yet adopted our 2020 schedule, so let's at least cover our January meeting. Do I have a motion to hold a planning board meeting on January 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So our next two upcoming meeting dates then will be December 17th and January 21st, and I apologize because I have not had a chance to look at the October minutes yet. I don't know if everybody else has, but if it's okay, I'd like to hold those over until December. Did you go through them?
I have not.
Okay, alright, so we'll hold those. The first, sorry, the second item on our agenda is correspondence for the changes to the zoning board based on our industrial land study. Pete, do you want to, I know Michelle's not able to be here tonight, do you want us, are you able to give us a quick summary?
I don't have anything on that because that's something, you know, that she would do. I typically don't get involved in that.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, so I'll give the board maybe just a quick overview, and if anybody has any questions, we can, we can either hold them for Michelle because she would have the more in-depth answers or not. But basically, as you guys know, we had a moratorium on industrial zoning in the town, and the town spent that moratorium time hiring a consultant to analyze the properties, find out the highest and best use in terms of development for many of them. And as a result of that study, and I'm probably not using the right exactly technical words, but as a result of that study, there's several areas around town where we've made some suggestions to update the zoning to more practical uses. Some of our industrial lands will be, if the town board adopts any new findings, will be changed to other types of zones or split zones where we allow more types of development on the existing properties. So hopefully that's, I know for those of you who've kind of looked into this a little bit more enough, we have some industrial zones that are right next to residential and things like that. So we're looking at making the zoning a little less harsh and a little more adept at transitioning between zones appropriately and things like that.
I'd hate to lose a lot of the industrial zones though, because then we're limiting ourselves what can come into the town.
Yeah, I don't think we're, I don't think we're removing all of them really, but we're just allowing some additional uses. There are a few cases though where we-
Well, by allowing additional uses means you are removing it because somebody could build something else in there.
Right, right.
And it's no longer an industrial zone.
I mean, the major thrust is converting from just industrial to commercial industrial.
I understand.
Thus allowing public-
I just don't want to limit ourselves where we don't have any industrial zones. Then somebody wants to build a manufacturing plant here and hire, you know, 5,000 people. If we don't have any industrial zones left, then what happens?
Yeah, no, I think what you'll, what you'll see, Jason, and you do, we do have a draft of it tonight. What you'll see is that we're retaining the industrial areas much closer to access to highways and things like that.
I get it.
And I think, I hope as you read through it, if you have suggestions for Michelle, you feel very comfortable suggesting back to her any, and certainly sharing with her any questions that you have. But I want to make sure that the board has this document and you know to review it.
Alright, did they look at any properties that weren't industrial zones that could be industrial zones?
The moratorium limited the town, I believe, on what we could study, but that's definitely something I'd want Michelle to address. I, she's much more in the weeds on exactly how deep they went with the comparisons.
Okay.
Mike, unless you, I'm sorry.
I, you know, honestly, I have not read, I have not read, this is actually the proposed law.
Right.
The study was what, it was driven on, and I have not had a chance to read the law that was based on that, so I'm equally in the dark.
I'll talk to Michelle about it.
But the moratorium has been lifted though.
Right.
Well, just, just to be specific though, we're, we're not in the dark. This is, this is the time for us to be able to review and provide comments, so we need to learn now and we'll-
Absolutely.
We'll certainly put this on, and I encourage you to reach out to Michelle again if you have additional questions.
So will this be on the agenda again in December, or we should reach out to Michelle between now and then?
You know what, let's, Pam's not here, I'm not sure exactly what the timing is unless, Pete, again, you know what the timing is for the town board to be considering this, so I'm not, I'm not the best person to answer that question, I'm sorry. It's a good question, we'll see if Pam knows, then we can, we can take it from there.
Okay.
The next item on our agenda is a referral from the town of Wappinger. This is a property that's being, they have an ability by special permit to convert properties into, it looks like they're converting an existing ceramic studio to one one-bedroom apartment and one two-bedroom apartment in addition to an existing apartment. So this is normally something that the town would defer back to the town of Wappinger. We wouldn't take any interest in this change, it seems fairly benign. Does anybody have any objection to just allowing the town of Wappinger to continue with that process?
No.
Okay, with me?
Excellent.
You want to ask Pam?
Thank you, Pam. We can, we can, now, we can move, excuse me, move back to our second item on the agenda. Pam, the question from the board was, we received tonight the copy, the draft of the new local law based on the industrial zone study.
We want to know if we can bring it up again in the December meeting.
Yes, can you just email the board and let us know what our comment period is? Excellent.
Great.
Thank you. Alright. And I'm sorry for that, we have just had a few folks, Michelle, one of them having conflicts for tonight, or Michelle would have been here and presented this to us, so. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for East Fishkill provisions. Pam, do we have everything we need to open the public hearing?
Jeff is on the-
Yes, please. And while we're getting the copy of the plan up onto the overhead, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
And while we're getting the plan itself up on the overhead, we'll also have some pictures here at the table. Just if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak during the public hearing, we'll, we'll pause and we'll ask for public comment. I would just ask that you come up and sign in, there'll be a clipboard up on the desk here. We're just having you sign in, we'd like to capture your names for the minutes, and then as we, as we call you out, you can come up to the podium and you can ask us questions or offer comment. And we'll do that after the applicant gives us an overview of the project.
Do you have a preference on what sheet, you want the site plan or the architectural renderings?
The proposed site plan would be best.
Yeah, just spin it around.
Well, it's a public hearing, so maybe what we could do is just have you set it to the side of the table there, that way you can kind of set it so that everybody can see it.
There you go.
Great. Thank you.
My name's Amy Bommerdery with Day and Stokosa, representing the provisions development. The expansion is to, the plan is to convert the existing outdoor seating into indoor dining room area and put an outdoor, an additional outdoor seating area to the rear of the property.
And I'm sorry, I don't, I can't remember if I said this at the beginning, this is the location at 567 Old Hopewell Road.
Right, yes.
Sorry, I should have said that, for the record.
But there's a net loss of seating, right?
Yeah, so the current-
Can you outline the areas that are going away and what's coming?
So, the current dining, the proposed seating is going to change from 126 to 115. So there is a net loss. The proposed parking has, is 46 spaces that are required and provided, and they're also land banking 52 additional spaces.
And that's in the lawn area where you have sometimes the car?
The additional spaces, it would be at the top of the-
So I think you have some other changes that you're proposing?
Yes.
We just need to capture you with a microphone if you don't mind, yeah?
Some of the changes we're looking to do is, it's just kind of the amendments of the pre-approved addition we have on the backside is the catering kitchen. The catering kitchen is going to be off the back northeast side in its original footprint, if not a little bit smaller than what we were pre-approved for in the early 2000s. The other minor amendment that we're trying to make is the actual terrace on the backside, just to maintain a little bit of outdoor seating. It's on the northwest side, northeast side, I'm sorry. And I guess the addition is on the northwest, but that is on the northeast side, not taking up any parking spaces. If anything, it's kind of adding some handicap accessibility to the building. That way we can have van parking in the rear, just making it more accommodating for those things. Main reason being just seating really wasn't needed, seems like more of a takeout business anymore with like Grubhub and everything, you know, on the rise and lunch breaks getting shorter, people aren't sitting there, so.
Okay. And I think there was two, are they new freezers or just relocated?
Those are going to be new, they're on the backside within the employee parking, behind the fence. They're going to be new, new coolers and freezers back there.
Okay. I know we've seen this a couple of times, but any questions or comments from board members? Do you want to give us a quick summary of the items from our professionals?
Yeah, from an engineering standpoint, we didn't have any, have any comments. Michelle had a letter, a memo. Did you receive a copy of her memo?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, a couple of things in here. So she also, in her first item, she goes through in regards to the number of seats, and the applicant has already said that they're going to be reducing the number of seats by 19. So one of the other things here was the applicant should contact the county health department to confirm adequate septic capacity. Do you know how many seats you're approved for on your food service permit?
No, not at the moment. I do know that we were, originally we, we had that addition kind of pre-approved, and we overbuilt our septic at the time, just because we knew that we were looking to put, originally we wanted to put manufacturing in there, which was high water use, so we never ended up doing that and-
Alright, but I mean, but you do, but you do have a food service permit, obviously, with the health department, right?
For, yes.
Yeah, because so normally on the food service permit, that would say how many seats that you're allowed for, you know, the facility. So, you know, I think that, and having been involved in some of these, you know, before restaurant type like uses, I think if you can, if you can produce your food service permit and show that the number of seats that, you know, you're, that you're like proposing now is, is covered by your food service permit, then I don't think there's any, there's any need to go to the health department, but, so if you could just get us a copy of your food service permit, because it should, it should have the number of seats that you're permitted for.
Okay.
Typically what we would do is, not having that tonight, we can condition for one or the other.
Yes, that's correct, yep. And then the other thing was, she's just looking for a confirmation to confirm, you know, the parking that it is 2,277 square foot of patron, patron space. I know that you've provided floor plans and, you know, and such, but I don't know, I haven't like looked at them, but apparently she has some like questions, so she would like you to just confirm that it is, you know, the 2,300 square feet.
Yeah, there was, there was a hiccup there, was a confusion with the architect and the engineer. The architect put down occupancy load, which is different than the seating load. So our, our parking is, was adequate with what our seating was, I believe we have the numbers on the backside here.
So your 2,200, your 2,200 square feet is the patron use square footage?
That's the, that's the space that the patrons take up minus tables.
Right, exactly.
I think there was a note from Michelle today that said parking was adequate.
Oh, today she sent something through? I didn't, I didn't see anything today.
I thought there was.
Alright, well if you can just, if you could just, you know, write or send an email or something, just, just to confirm that 2,277 number.
Is the up to date?
The calculations for-
Yeah, I think Anita has it on there.
They're, yeah, they're the second block, third block down from the-
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's from Day, Stokosa Engineering, that's the most up to date.
Okay.
We did read through it today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I typically, I mean, this particular application, because it doesn't really involve a lot of engineering, I didn't really look at it, so I'm just going by what, you know, her memo said, because she's not, she's not here tonight. So if you could just, just confirm the 2,277, and then if you can get us a copy of your food service permit showing the number of seats that you're permitted for, I would assume that that should take care of the need to not have to go to the county health department.
Alrighty.
And I think that covers, covers what she had. The ARB had already approved the elevations.
Did we confirm her second bullet point on the, whether the enclosed patio space?
Yeah, it says here, "Will enclosed patio space with 68 seats be served by waitstaff? Or will the enclosed patio be open seating for counter service?"
Just like what we're doing now, people take their lunch and sit down, eat, and then depart, no waitress service.
So just pick up at the counter and-
No waitress service there.
No.
The reason we ask that is it can affect employee parking counts.
Yeah.
Yeah, understood.
Okay, so that's no.
And then her last bullet point, the outdoor area is seasonal, so there'll be-
Right, that there would be-
13 additional parking spaces.
Right, if you, right, by the calculation.
And it looks like you have received your ARB approval, and Pam, I apologize, do we have ARB comments or anything we need to review for this application? You gave me their minutes? Here we go, I got them, thank you, sorry. And you have your drawings, these are your elevations, if anyone from the public would like to see them, we can put those up as well, or leave them here on the table if anyone would like to see them. And do you, you don't have any changes pending on those documents, these are the actual-
These are, these are the actual 3D renderings. Color subject to changes based on what it looks like on the building versus on paper. Everything's, everything's just pending approval and getting submitted for building.
Okay. And you're, the color scheme is matching your existing building, correct? You're not changing the color scheme?
No, color scheme is, is there to kind of go along with, it's going to be a different color, it's different material, different, instead of it being horizontal, it's going to be vertical, to kind of break up. It would be very hard to match what's there, but I think it would actually complement what's there by going with a vertical board and pattern versus the biocided.
Pete, any other comments from professionals you want to go?
I was looking, I was looking at the fire advisory board comments, and they had one comment about relocate the dumpster at least 35 feet away from shed, or enclose in a fire resistant enclosure.
They, yeah, we can look to see if I can get it further away, if not, possibly just a brick wall to kind of contain or cover up.
Okay.
There's some very specific requirements for the refuse enclosure if it's within 35 feet of your building.
Okay, it's not within, oh, okay, it's not within 35 feet of the building, but it is-
It says, it says 35 feet away from the shed, I don't know where the shed is.
Shed is on the back, along the, it's in the lot on the fence there, right where the-
It would be from any building.
Yeah.
Okay, I could make sure this distance, if not, I would enclose it just to either make it look better or make it safer.
So, so I think on the, you know, the final plan before it gets, it gets signed, if you can just, like decide what you're going to do and then note it on the plan.
Okay.
Either like move it or, or just, you know, put up your wall like you're saying.
Okay.
But it does say like enclosed, enclosure, is there a dump, is there, is there, is there a dumpster enclosure now, or it's just?
Uh, no, it's just, it's just on a pad away. I do know, just because there was, with like item four and stuff was dumped next to it, so the dumpsters were moved down, so once the item four, I can, I could probably move it and just take measurements, make sure it goes back to its proper clearance. I wasn't aware of the restrictions on the, the garbage, but I could definitely-
Does the, does the planning board want to see a full dumpster enclosure on this, or?
If it's going to be within 35 feet of a structure, I believe it needs to have an enclosure. If it's going to be more than 35 feet away, it's the applicant's decision what they would like to do.
And we don't make any distinction between, the shed is like a lawnmower shed, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So do we don't make any distinction between a lawnmower shed and a restaurant?
No, because if there's gasoline stored in the shed or anything, you don't want to have-
About a fire hazard, not for service.
Yeah, if it is far away, the garbage is hidden from eyesight, it is kind of enclosed in the employee parking, so I mean, if I could get the 35 feet away, I would definitely try and do that, other than build another enclosure around it.
And then the only thing you choose, if you are going to change, just make sure you check with your waist taller to make sure you're not putting it in a place where they can't access it.
Yeah. Alright.
Anything else, Pete?
No.
And we don't have any change to the ingress or egress to the site, you're not changing your driveways or anything like that, so there's no permitting involved? If there are no other questions or comments from board members, is there anyone from the public who would like to come up and speak or share comment on the East Fishkill provisions application? Going once, twice? Okay? Absolutely, come on up. What we'll ask you to do is just add your, add your name to our clipboard, just so we can capture you for our minutes. And then you can come right up to the podium.
I just have a question. My name is Paul Haynes, and I live across the street.
Okay.
They've been great neighbors, so I just wanted to know, where are they?
Can you just, I'm sorry, sir, we just need you to stay, you can ask us the question, we'll direct the applicant to answer. We just need to capture your question, so that when we record the meetings, we have your voice.
Just would like to know, is there any change in the parking, is the parking remaining the same, and how much parking there is?
Okay, thank you. We can have you come on, but do you want to just run through the parking you have now? I know there's land bank parking as well.
There's 46 spaces required and proposed based on the patron load, and the 52 bank spaces, which are, the land will be reserved on the northern side of the parcel, so that gives you a total of 98.
Is that more than what it is now?
I was going to say, I think the gentleman's question is what, what changes, and I think it-
Well, the banked parking is dedicated to not be, the land will remain.
But it's not being paved.
It's not being paved, it's not changing.
So, let me just, how many parking spaces do you have right now on the site?
I believe there's 46.
Okay, and you have the land banked on your site right now as well?
I think that's proposed, but yeah, the land is there, but it's going to be, when the site plan's approved.
So no additional area being paved at this time, but land banked parking, what that means for the board is that if, if at some point in time the site is a little bit overrun or needs more parking, the town can request that that land be paved so that it accommodates more cars in an orderly way.
Does that change the site plan approval?
Come on back, I'm sorry, we just got a, I apologize, guys, we just, we need to capture you on the line.
Would that change the site plan approval, or?
The site plan will include, if, and if you look up, it's a little bit hard to see, but if you look up along the top line, you see kind of the row of what looks like parking spaces.
Uh huh.
That's what would be paved, so it's part of their site plan, but it's noted on the site plan as grass for now.
Both of those rows?
Yes. And the existing-
It would be as necessary, I think, right?
Right.
If you didn't need all of, everything paved then-
But typically, you probably wouldn't build one long strip, you would build a portion, you'd kind of build it out as you need it.
Right.
Great, okay, thank you. We could have the applicant come on back up, thank you. I'm sorry, I should have just, anybody else who want to talk or comment or questions? Alright, great. Do I have a, it doesn't sound like, Pete, there's nothing here that would stop us from closing the public hearing?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we do have, we heard a couple of conditions we would need to add to a resolution, but we do have a negative declaration for tonight. Unless anyone from the board has objection, I think this is fairly straightforward, we haven't heard any public comment that would stop us from moving forward with the resolution tonight. Is everybody comfortable offering the negative declaration?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this negative declaration, or notice of determination of non-significance is dated November 19th, 2019. This is an unlisted action under seeker for the site plan amendment for East Fishkill provisions. The action is the approval of an amended site plan to add a new kitchen space and reconfigure the interior and outdoor pavilion space to better service the deli, ice cream shop, and catering service. It includes the following improvements, a 1,357 square foot catering prep kitchen, addition to the rear of the existing restaurant, two new walk-in coolers and freezers, and a 736 square foot open air pavilion, and the enclosure of the existing 2,475 square foot open air pavilion. Board reviewed a long form EAF, and during the course of that review, because this site is already essentially improved, we identified no additional environmental concerns, and therefore we are recommending that there are no significant potential impacts identified, and we, based on a review, there appear to be no significant adverse environmental impacts. Do I have a motion to approve the negative declaration?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Does someone want to offer the resolution?
Sure.
Thanks, Mike.
Resolution of amended site plan approval, name of the site plan, East Fishkill provisions' amended site plan, name of the applicant, George Mistakis, location, 285 Old Hopewell Road, Hopewell Junction, resolution offered by planning board member Michael O'Brien. Whereas the applicant has applied for amended site plan approval to construct a 1,357 square foot catering prep kitchen addition to the rear of the building, install two walk-in cooler freezers, add a 736 foot open air pavilion, and close the existing, existing two, what is that?
There's an extra two there.
Okay, so 2,000, thanks. 2,374 square foot open pavilion, open air pavilion, and reconfiguring the interior space to better serve the existing deli, ice cream shop, and catering service, and whereas the site has 46 parking spaces and 52 land bank parking spaces, whereas the board conducted a public hearing on November 19th, 2019, and whereas the action is considered to be an unlisted action under seeker, which coordinator review was not undertaken, and whereas the planning board adopted a negative declaration on November 19th, 2019, and whereas the applicant has submitted an amended final site plan, and the board finds that this application meets the town requirements for final amended site plan approval, subject to the conditions set forth below. Now, therefore be it resolved, I think, were you going to add conditions, and it's, where are we going to put the conditions?
On the next page.
Okay, next, now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby issues final amended site plan approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled, East Fishkill Provisions amended site plan, prepared by Mark Day, P.E., dated October 3rd, 2019, and last revised through October 14th, 2019. Is that the right date?
No, November, November 12th, 2019.
November 12th, 2019. As well as the floor pan submitted by Castiglione Architectural Design dated September 28th, 2019, last revised October 11th, 2019? That one's still, okay. Be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed by the planning board chair.
Okay, so we've got a few to add. The first will be the modifications set forth in the town planner's letter of November 7th, 2019. And we don't, we don't have anything from anybody else, right? That's the only letter that's outstanding?
No, Michelle's letter, that's it. But we want to make sure in there, and maybe you're going to get to it, is for them to provide a copy of the Dutch County Health Department- provide a copy of the Dutch County Health Department.
I'm gonna get that.
Yep.
Okay. The plat will contain either the written approval of the Dutchess County Health Department, or the applicant will provide sufficient evidence of, do we want to say?
Approved, approved seating capacity.
Or the applicant.
Compliance with the approved seating capacity, yes.
I don't think it would be compliance, right? We just need to make sure that the maximum number of seats would be
We need to, we.
Within their existing board of health-approved.
Seating, that's correct, that's correct.
Okay. I'll, I'll tweak that wording a little bit if the board is okay with that shortly. But basically, in the applicant, you're comfortable, we're asking, you're either gonna need to go get board of health approval, or you're gonna give us proof that your restaurant capacity as proposed, is that you have the proper board of health approvals for it. Alright, um, next is a landscape and lighting plan, to be approved by the town planner.
I thought you'd already done that, but.
I don't think so, I, I thought, did you give us a landscape and lighting plan already? I don't think there's a lot of changes to it, but the outdoor seating probably needs some additional lighting.
Yeah, but the, uh, in, the indoor lighting, I figured it'd be like, uh, less light splashing.
Yeah, we don't look at indoor lighting.
Okay, yeah, okay, I can, uh, look to gather that.
Okay. Um, and then normally, do, we would say, we'd want, especially with changes like this, we would say we want to review the land bank parking? I don't know if it's gonna change the complexion of the property or not.
Well, I was thinking about that as, uh, as we were talking about that, and if they were gonna consider, um, paving fifty-two, fifty-two parking spaces, I, I, you know, I think that the town engineer's office should just be able to take a look at it to make sure that wasn't gonna cause any drainage impacts. So maybe there could be a, a note that was placed on the map that says something like, will they have to come back and ask, ask the planning board to use the land, to pave? I mean, they can use it.
I think it would be the building department, right? It would be the building department.
It'd be the building department, so they can use the land bank parking, just, you know, for grass parking, right? But if they do want to pave it, they have to come back and ask, you know, the building department, is that right? Okay, so I would, I would think at that point, somebody in the building department would say, well, we should just take a look at the drainage, so as long as they have to come back and check with the building department before paving, I think we're all set.
I'm sorry, this is a real question. I thought in most of those cases where people were asked to, that, that was initiated by, by the, by the town, right?
What, of the need?
It can be by either.
Okay.
It can be by either.
Okay.
Okay, but like in either case, you know, to pave for fifty-two parking spaces, somebody should look at, should look at drainage.
Okay, we also, when, when we land bank, we typically, within twelve months, want to review the adequacy of the existing site parking, and just make sure we, that the town isn't gonna ask for that land bank parking to be, to be completed, or a portion of it to be completed. Do we want to include that condition here as well?
Yeah, probably, yes.
Okay. And typically, what we do is say, within twelve months of your final C.O. for all of your improvements, that way we just, the town gets the feel for what a year's worth of use of the property looks like, and just in case anything changes, and or is, or is unexpected, does that make sense? Board members okay with that?
Sure.
Yep.
Alright, and then the last one I have, let's see, this would be number?
Dumpster.
Number five is right, the refuse enclosure must be thirty-five feet from all buildings, or be enclosed by a fire-resistant enclosure. And you can show that on the plan, but we, we'd need to do that before we're able to sign the plan. Anything else, anything I missed? Okay.
Okay. Be it further resolved that within five businesses, the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause, shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from John, and votes as follows, Jason?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. And I see that, yeah, okay, I was gonna say, I see that Steve has returned.
I'm waiting for him to come tap me out here.
I would like to ask Mr. Caswell how he was able to get here from Armonk in under an hour. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item on our, sorry, just bear with me as I. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Brumation at Nineteen Donovan Drive.
Land speed record. Do it again.
I think that's, was that yours? That wasn't our?
Is that, is that?
I thought that was Amy's.
Is that Amy's?
I saw Gus.
I think it could be Amy's.
I don't know where it came from.
Yeah, I think it's Amy's.
It is Amy's.
Need to lower it.
Amy, is that yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
I charge rent.
Feel free to break it.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
I think that's worth a dollar.
Yeah. I'm sure, if, you know, terms can be negotiated.
Well, he's getting that set up, good evening, everybody. Kevin Weaver, the owner of Brumation, Nineteen Donovan Drive, and, um, but we're, we're expanding at, uh, our company, things are getting busier, so we're looking to add on two phases of expansion. What we're talking about tonight is, is our first phase of the expansion, which is adding on some R and D space within our existing building. The second phase of the expansion is gonna be one that we're hoping to get on, be submitted for the next board meeting, as a separate project, which will be more significant, which is doubling the size of our building, one that was, um, already looked at as our first site plan evaluation, but that's a separate project, but just to kind of let everybody know a little bit what we're up to.
Kevin, do you have any timeframe for that?
Well, my hope would be to break ground sometime in March.
Okay.
March, April.
Okay, so it's not years out, it's fairly close.
It's aggressive, I'm hoping, we'll see what happens, but sooner the better. But we have, Mike and I have some work to do, but we're hoping to get things submitted for that part of it, um, in time for the December meeting. If not, we'll go to the January meeting and see how quick we can go through with that, but, but for now, we're just talking about the first phase, which is adding some R and D space. So that phase one is, um, we have a current storage space in our building, and that storage space, we're looking to take a portion of that to create, um, space for R and D and engineering and, and testing. So, by taking away some of our storage space, of course, we're gonna need more storage, so we're also gonna expand out our storage space slightly, about eight foot, so net-net, we lose a little storage space, but we're gaining on R and D space, which our level two at the moment was not part of the initial site plan. So I guess, as part of this meeting, it really comes down to the parking spaces, and what the allotment of the parking spaces are. So, we'll talk about that. Part of our two phases, um, you know, the first phase and second phase, we, because we're shuffling around some inventory, we want to put some, um, uh, storage containers on the site in three of the parking spaces.
Those are the containers that are already there?
Uh, two of them are there currently, yeah, so we're looking to get those on, on a temp, and then we want to add a third one there. And I think one of the comments that came through was asking if that was temporary, and it would be temporary pending the second phase expansion, just so we had some space to put some of our inventory as we build everything out.
Is that finished inventory that's out there, or is it just equipments, normal equipment storage?
Uh, it's, it's for the most part, normal equipment storage, we're putting things out there, like our, um, control panel enclosures and things that aren't affected by hot and cold, uh, so it's, it's, it's inventory type, type things. Some trade show supplies and things that are just in the way of our moving things around.
Thank you.
Can I just, and I'm sorry, you, you made mention that you were adding eight feet to storage space, I didn't catch that part of your.
Yeah, so on our second floor, it's basically, um, we call it a loft area, um, but it's, it's the second floor that's over the top of our production area. And right now, that's all storage space, so what we're doing is we're just extending out that loft area, so we have some more square footage.
It's internal, it's internal, right, internal.
Okay, that's what I was at, 'cause I wasn't sure if you meant you were moving, adding eight feet to the building.
Oh, no, no, we're not changing.
It's internal, yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I just, that was.
So are you gonna end up with the same amount of storage space that you have now?
Uh, at the moment, it's gonna be a little less, um, we're probably gonna lose about, um, about six, six to eight feet, I believe, up there, storage space. So we just had to rearrange, but that's temporary until we do the phase two, which is to, uh, do the, do the bigger expansion.
Were we tight on parking to begin with?
Tight again?
Are we tight on parking to begin with on this?
What was the question, I'm sorry?
Parking, we just, just run through the parking you currently have, and what you would need as you add additional employees for your R and D area.
Right, um, at the moment, we have twenty-three spaces on the site, um, and I, I believe we're, have it calculated to need, um, where did Mike?
Twenty-three.
Correct.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Uh, the, the parking spaces.
What do you have, what do you need?
Twenty-three spaces.
Right. Right now, we're proposing twenty-three. We didn't ask for any waivers at the original site plan, uh, we did bank some parking spots, we did bank some parking spots originally, so we're, we're basically kind of, bless you, basically building these bank spots, effectively, that we didn't build before, you know?
So how many do you have on site right now paved, like in?
We have a full, uh, full twenty-three.
Okay, and do you have land banked right now that you're additional land banked? Or no?
In the original site.
What happened was, right. What happened was. Can we get the mic?
I have to point to the plan.
Oh, okay, I guess you could do that.
So, we had originally proposed all of these spaces, one through five, six through thirteen, and fourteen through seventeen, these, we're all gonna get land banked.
Whatever happened, they actually got constructed.
Okay.
So they exist.
Okay, so you have no additional land banked right now?
Nothing.
Are you proposing that you'll need additional parking spaces? 'Cause especially with the storage containers now, and then three additional employees, right, that's six more spaces than.
With, with the R and D, we're looking at, um, at the moment, two employees. We have in there three, 'cause there may be a third, we haven't made a final decision on that, but it could be three. So with that, the, even with those, so with the twenty spaces, we have more than adequate space in there for our current and projected employee count.
How many employees roughly will you have there on any, at your peak, number of employees? Do you have an idea of that?
Um, yeah, probably about fifteen.
Okay.
Yeah, fifteen, including the new three, uh, 'cause we have two employees that are off-site, not part of the building.
Do you ever have customers or anybody also coming on site, do you need, like?
If we do, it's, it's, it's one car, you know, we don't, we usually have more than one customer at a time, so, um, and then if there's a contractor there, then maybe they'll park there, but it's, it's generally quite a few places, spaces available.
Okay.
So, so I assume there'll be like a, a, a major revision to the parking coming in March as well?
That's where I was going, next.
Right, well, um, we were looking at the, the future on, on that, and, um, I mean, we'll have to do the final numbers, but I believe we're gonna still be adequate space if we add, I think maybe two or three more spaces that are actually able to be placed on the same paved area, but we're still going through that, that planning, that'll be part of our hopeful December meeting.
Where are you adding the addition to the building?
So, you see the dotted lines here?
Yep, that's where it's going.
By the way, congratulations on this growth.
Oh, thank you.
It's impressive.
Yeah, it's been crazy, a few more gray hairs here.
Alright, so, you said you were gonna have an additional application, or are you gonna expand this application to include the extension on the building?
I think what happens is, right now, he's got an application for the building permit, because of the floor plan modifications a little bit, they kind of said, hey, jump back to the planning board, make sure we're good on parking, let's get that okayed as part of a revision to, let's call it phase one. So we're in for a minor modification, revision to phase one, which was the original phase. My client is under the understanding, we may make in December, um, we've got some work to do. We would come in, in December, with the actual extension of the building, the footprint itself.
Right.
Okay.
Given that, I would, I, I would see this as a minor.
Okay, so let's just finish our process.
Okay.
Pete, do you want to just go over any comments we have from our professionals?
Um, well, again, we don't have anything from an engineering standpoint, but Michelle's, uh, November eighth memo, she talked about, you know, the parking, but it seems like the applicant is saying that even with the, uh, even with the three, well, she's saying here, three, um, storage, storage containers, you said you only had two now?
We have two there now, but we're gonna, we want to bring in a third.
You're gonna add, you're gonna add, no, so that, so, so now you're down to twenty spaces, but you feel that the twenty spaces is gonna be like enough for, for this first phase of what you need? Alright, so, and then she goes on to say that the approved site plan included nine land bank spaces, four of these spaces had been paved, leaving five land bank spaces available for future use. I don't know if that really matters all that much now, because if you're coming in again, but, Mike, did you say that they, that they paved all of the land bank?
They already did.
Okay.
So they're all paid, okay.
Alright, so. I guess the only thing I would ask is that, um, if, if by chance that you didn't follow through with, you know, the second phase for whatever like reason, what happens to the temporary, uh, you know, containers?
We'll take them off-site.
Okay, is that, are you guys concerned about putting something on the plan in case?
They're temporary, so they're movable.
Okay.
As long as they're not affixed to the ground.
No, they're temporary, yeah.
Okay.
And they're rentals, so.
Yeah.
So what are you gonna do with all the stuff that's in them?
Well, I guess if we're not gonna expand, then I'm, I'm not gonna need the space, but we're gonna, we're gonna expand, but, yeah.
And this is an industrial zone, right?
Sure is.
This is a high-one.
Right, so, yeah. Back to Jason.
It's not one of the ones being removed.
Well, back to your point, Jason.
Hey, if we, if we want more companies like this to come into town.
Pete, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, any other questions or comments from board members? This appears to be a minor adjustment, does anybody disagree? Do I have a motion to approve the minor interior floor plan adjustment to add the R and D space on the second floor of the building, which will include extending the loft area by approximately eight linear feet?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Hopewell Enterprises on Hillside Lake Road, which is three seventy-six.
You know, Amy, I think he's doing some damage to your easel, but.
Just gotta stir it up, right? Just keep stirring it up.
The rates have gone up.
So, uh, this is the project we heard before, uh, the board last month with, uh, before again. The board had a concern relative to the access points, we had originally showed, um, there were a couple of things, there were six lots plus the portion of the property to be transferred to Savelico. We had shown six lots, three lots being served by a central access point, three lots served by an access point, and shared driveways. We ran all the calculations for shared driveways and so forth, so one of the requests that came, um, from the board was, hey, could you talk to the county and see what the possibility would be to, instead of having three with two shared access points, how about two lots each having three access points, right? So, again, in their, um, criteria, they typically like to limit access onto the roadways, curb cuts, things such as that. So, the following day, I went ahead and, um, sent a revised plan up to the county, DPW. They, we had also asked, talked to them about the, the easement issue, if you remember, there's a pretty significant drainage ditch that runs through the property. And the idea was. And the idea was, who wants the easement, is it the town, is it the county? So, I did get a response from the county. I forwarded that response with our submission. But they are actually okay with that modification, which is, it helps for a number of reasons, all right? One is my client likes it better, okay? Because in fact, there's not, there's no more encumbrances, okay, relative to easements and shared driveway easements and things such as that. So that helps in that manner. We've done it in such a way where, again, you have the shared apron, okay? As you come off the apron, then you kind of, well, bless you, you move to each of the lots, okay? So, you know, a shared apron is different than a shared driveway. We don't have to meet the shared driveway requirements, that's fine. These lots are oversized anyway, because we had to meet that criteria. So I think everybody wins on this one.
All right.
Which is a good thing.
That works.
So, I will get something more formal from them. I did forward the email that I'd gotten from the county, you know, but, you know, I figured it was sufficient enough. They are not interested in taking this easement. That's, they said that the town would like to take it. We're okay, we're good with that.
It sounded like it might have been Tom's recommendation that the town take it anyway, just so we control our destiny there.
We determine that we'll take it, so.
So we'll have to work up the details on that.
Yeah.
For the transfer, and then, oh, in terms of the Sibelico parcel, one of the things that they wanted, you know, the board and Tom had indicated, they wanted some assurance that obviously Sibelico is part of this application, and we're transferring property to them. They have three separate taxable properties on the side of the property that's being transferred to them. We actually sat down with Ray and his wife, and it's actually with his son, and we talked about which, what should go where. And there's a small parcel in the front that has frontage on 376, no, has frontage on Hillside Lake Road.
Right.
That's a very small parcel, and so forth, but that's the property that we're going to transfer this to. We will tick that small lot on here, so it's clear where the property is going.
Yeah, we need to show that on, you know, the survey, and I assume you're going to have to get, you know, health department approval on that. What's on, is there anything on the lot now?
There is, there is. There's part of their, their site plan, we talked about this at the last meeting. There's, part of their access point is there, I think actually the small office in the front is on that property, so.
And Mike, what's on the intervening property? That it's being joined to, I mean, it doesn't abut, does it?
What do you mean about intervening property?
Intervening, which one are we talking about?
I thought there was another, maybe, without the other plan.
Lot D is like a little corner right off the four acres, right? It's just like a little corner right off the room.
Okay, so it does abut, okay.
It does abut, that's correct.
Because there was another little piece too, okay, all right. So it is, it is that piece, the abutting piece, not the other, okay.
No, yeah, and what's important too there really, and hopefully maybe we get to that point tonight, is for the purposes of the public hearing, we have to send flyers out to people within 500 feet of the property boundaries. If that small piece is becoming part of this application, then we have to measure from that parcel out. Okay, so that's, and because it's a smaller parcel, hopefully it's not as many notices that have to go out. But that comes into play on that anyway, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think that was the extent of it. I do have Michelle's letter, but I guess you can go over that, Pete.
That covered all of my notes. Any other questions or comments from board members before Pete runs down the professional letters?
Yeah, the only point I would make is, I don't think, we had an issue before with, we were waiting to see what DPW said about the hash, or the curb cuts. It wasn't like, we felt we were the horse in front of, I mean, the cart in front of the horse. We were waiting to see what they said, but, knocks nicks.
Does anybody have concern with the plan, is it?
No, no, I think this was better, I just made the point that we weren't the one driving the curb.
Everybody wins.
Pardon?
Everybody wins.
Yeah, everybody wins. No one loses.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Pete, do you want to, oh, do you want to run through any comments?
Sure, I'll just go through my memo of November eleventh, because most of, you know, Michelle's stuff is in mine anyways.
Okay.
So, the first one, Mike, if we could just get the tax ID numbers on the area map with, you know, the acreage, acreages, it'd be just easier to try to match it up with how you're doing the land transfer. And then, you know, most of the rest is just housekeeping, and I mean, you know, the plans are just in the preliminary stages. But we'll need meets and bounds, obviously, for all, you know, the lots we talked about. You're going to incorporate parcel D as part of, you know, the subdivision map, right? And, and then erosion control measures, obviously, grading. And then, as, you know, as you said, you're going to have to get a letter from, you know, the county formally on the three driveway cuts, just to confirm that, you know, the site distance is met. I mean, there's plenty out there, but.
I think that was one of the selling points of the county.
Yeah, there's plenty of site distance.
An abundance of site distance, so it wasn't like it was questionable, you know, so.
Right, there's plenty there. And then the drainage easement, we talked about that we would take it, and so we'll need a legal document and meets and bounds with that. And I think that covers, you know, both of our, Michelle's and mine.
Did Dave have anything regarding the driveways?
Not for this one, no, no.
Dave, as you indicated at the meeting, I just kind of keep Dave in the loop relative to anything. So he was CC'd on the email that I sent to the county, and also on the response that came from them. So he's on board relative to all of that.
Okay, all right. Pete, is there anything, anything left other than adding? I know you're going to add the parcel, I think it's parcel D. Is that parcel D? Parcel D to the, to the map and show it as the four-acre parcel being annexed to that. Is there anything else that would stop us from setting a public hearing at this point? I don't think that's a significant change. To Mike's point, we still have to notice everybody within the 500 feet, but.
I mean, it's pretty early, but, I mean, it's really up to you. I mean, unless you want to see one more, you know, like round of plans.
I'm asking you if you need to see anything else before, if you think there's anything else that Mike would need to add to the plan that might change that, that site plan or that layout significantly.
I mean, have you done, you know, soil test and all that out there?
We did them for the stormwater in addition to the health department, because we kind of knew the lots at least were locked in, and we wanted to get them in before the weather hits.
All gravel, probably?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're going to tinker with the groundwater a little bit, but it's all gravel out there, so.
All right, so if we go ahead.
Do you need to see more of the drainage before we?
No, it's pretty flat out, I mean, it's pretty, I don't think there's going to be any, you know, drainage issues from any of these, you know, lots. So, if you were to set a public hearing, then, you know, you would get an updated, updated set of plans before the hearing, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would have to look, I guess, we would prefer, would like to certainly go to a hearing. I guess just looking at the dates relative to the timeframes, can we still do it for December? Do we have time on the clock?
Because you still got to, because, you know, you still got to go.
Have to submit the revised plans and all of that.
Right, well, we have to submit the end of the month, obviously, for December meeting, but I just, in terms of the average time.
Yeah, but for your, for your notice, if it's a public hearing, you got to be 25 days ahead.
Right, well, this is why I'm asking, do we make it as of, let's say theoretically?
With Thanksgiving next week?
Theoretically, if they go out tomorrow, or, let's, let's say Thursday. Are we still okay relative to the calendar, relative to getting them out?
I'm looking at Pam, because she's.
She's got the calendar.
She's sorry, she's sorry.
You know, we'll get the submission in at the end of the month and get that, get everything up to snuff, although it's pretty minor stuff. But I just want to make sure we have enough time, I'm hearing it.
It's 25 calendar days. So it'd be by the 27th.
27th, is that the day?
I think, right, because it's 25 calendar days.
Right.
Our next meeting is 22nd.
December 17th.
Seventeenth.
Oh.
That's why I'm saying it's a really tight.
I mean, you still have to go through, I mean, even if, even if we did it for the first meeting, you know, in January, I mean, you still have to go through.
We also have a January 21st meeting.
Twenty-eight days.
Look at the look.
I don't think, I've seen that before. I do appreciate the answer.
But you know what?
It said a lot. It said a lot.
I will tell you, it said a lot. You didn't, it covered a lot of vermin out there. Nobody here who didn't understand exactly how you felt about that.
The owners will be on us to get those notices out, if we have time.
We'll get them by Friday. We have to get them by Friday.
Pam, what do you think?
Pete, are you, you're sure you're comfortable that the plan is sufficient for us to start the public hearing process?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
January 21st. Kidding.
Are you making a motion for December 17?
December 17th, I can make that a motion, yeah.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second to schedule our Hopewell Enterprises LLC for public hearing on December 17th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Great.
Merry Christmas.
If you don't make your notice requirements, then.
Well, it's us.
Done.
Then it's on us, right? Hey, have a nice, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Can we see that face one more time?
One more time?
All right, thanks again. The next item on our agenda is Stone Ridge Commons at Roundhill Road and Route 52, on for discussion.
You can use this easel.
Yeah.
Are you saying she's okay to use her own easel?
Yes, exactly.
Exactly, that's exactly what we said.
Hi, Amy, I'm going to do it again. So this proposal is for a two, two, three-story buildings to be constructed on the parcel adjacent to Palin Road and Route 52 to the south. Building one is, has 27 one-bedroom units, that's the building on the east. And building two has 24 two-bedroom units. There's a total of 89 parking spaces required. We're showing 100 on-site for additional visitor parking. The parcel is located in the Transitional Zone Residential District. There is central water and sewer, it's going to be connected to both buildings. It meets all density and bulk regulations. And, we've received comments from the Planning Department, CPL, and the Traffic Engineers, and the County Planning Department.
Did you receive the fire advisory board comments?
No, I have not.
Okay. I'll, I'll give this to you, but just to quickly summarize, they're looking for fire-rated water supply system trash disposal sites to be located at least 35 feet from all buildings. And the turning radius into the buildings from the internal roads must meet the fire district specifications.
Okay.
And they would like to see the building design specs to determine their aerial ladder access, so their ladder truck access.
Okay.
And they want to make sure that the fire hydrant locations are on the plan.
Okay.
Are you putting sprinklers, are these buildings sprinkler?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's another, that's another recommendation, as well as a Knox box, which is required for all.
Knox box, okay.
And you're, I'll, I'll hand this.
Amy, the exit out onto Palin Road, if I may.
Sure.
How wide is Palin at that point? I mean, I can't gauge it from the thing, I suppose I should be able to, but I.
It's three lanes, I think, there's two.
Is it, so, so are you going across three lanes, or just two?
You're crossing two.
You're crossing two into your third. Okay, so it is.
If you're coming out, if you're taking a right.
No, there's three lanes, there's a right and a turn.
So if you're going right, you're crossing, there's the two, there's a right turn lane, right?
There's a right and a left lane, right?
But it's further, it is sufficiently close to 52 that it is within the three-lane delineation. So left-hand turns will be crossing two lanes.
Left turning in.
No, I want to, I'm sorry, can, do, do we have a blow-up of Palin Road? Because I thought there's both a right and a left turning lane, as well as a straight.
There is, there is.
Yeah, so.
You got it right here.
There's actually four lanes on the road, right where that driveway is.
One, two, three.
So you're crossing all three to make that left.
Yes.
Okay.
To get into the fourth lane, if you will. Going the other way.
That is an approved entrance, though. That was previously approved by the county.
I was just, no, I was just asking that that happened. Getting perspective?
It looks like it's, it's right-in only, though, correct?
Correct, so there's not queuing out onto 52.
And they're allowing right and left egress or exit from the property.
And 52, it's restricted to a right-out only. Again, that's, they're both approved entrances. The 52 entrance is in with the median.
I'd almost rather see the 52 entrance be full motion.
Well, that was one of Dave's comments.
Because at least you have, you have the, the turning lane there that you kind of pull into to.
Yeah, he had recommended that, that the applicant talked to the Department of Transportation about, as you just said, a full access at the proposed Route 52 driveway, including left turn, egress, and ingress. And then, upon DOT approval, the proposed driveway to Palin Road could be modified to a right-in and right-out only, to prohibit the left turn egress.
So, again, these are both approved entrances. 52 is already installed, and Palin Road.
I'm just going to share the, they're approved entrances, but they were approved for a different segment, right? They weren't approved for this use.
The use they were approved for, actually, we have a letter from the traffic engineer stating that the traffic is going to be less. Yeah, less of a burden than it was for the original approval.
But you weren't going to have school buses having to enter this site, and other things like that. So I think it's worth the conversation, right?
But I think, I mean, we, sorry.
I mean, does it make, just because it's approved, doesn't mean that it's safe. And to me, crossing three lanes on the Palin Road doesn't, isn't safe in my eyes.
Well, I, I mean, if it's already approved, it's already been reviewed for safety, and it's been reviewed for the traffic that was a higher demand.
Well, maybe we need to.
Our traffic engineer is sharing, we're sharing the comments that he's made with you. I'm going to just encourage you to continue that conversation with him.
Okay.
We can move on from that point for tonight, but just again, that's a board concern, and we're sharing it with you.
Well, and just, if I can just go ahead and, like, along those, along those lines, I think that both either the Planning Board, but especially like Dave, should be like involved in any like discussions that end up happening with, you know, the Department of Transportation and, you know, the county. If there's like a meeting, we would want to have, like, Dave be able, like, to be there to, you know, represent the town, or Scott, or, you know, somebody.
So we're asking that the applicant revisit the ingress and egress of the site with the proposed change in the use.
Which I think makes a lot of sense, by the way. The residential does make a lot of sense there, so.
Well, I think, am I, was it, was it a mixed use prior to the approval? Was it partially residential, or was it only?
No, it was always commercial.
It was commercial.
It's commercial.
Okay. So I guess, let's, can we, since we're talking about ingress and egress, let's talk about sidewalks. So I think the current, we were given some, some basic drawings, and it's hard for me to see on this, on this plan, the sidewalks that are currently proposed. But I think possibly in the, in the professionals' letters, but I know from my perspective, I'd like to make sure that we are able to connect to wherever I parks, cross, Route 52 crossing is. So making sure we're planning for that, whether it's built out immediately or not, we don't really need a sidewalk to nowhere. But making sure there's space on the plan, and we're planning for that. for that at the point where there's an appropriate crossing.
Okay, there is that landscape buffer that I, that was part of the original approval, so the sidewalk on this is not shown going through that.
Okay.
So we'd need some kind of...
Or we would need to know where that boundary is, so that if there's going to be a Route 52 crossing, we're aligning it correctly, right?
Right, I mean, so it's shown on the map, the hatch area to the right of the parcel is where the landscape buffer was.
And then the other, going towards the other direction, you do have a high school at the foot of the hill, so we would like the applicant to look at potentially installing a sidewalk, so we don't have kids from this development walking down the road. We'd prefer them to be, maybe in the right-of-way, but we'd prefer them to have a sidewalk that gets them down to the existing Route 52 crossing across from the high school.
So that was brought up at the last meeting, I think that is beyond the parcel that is being applied.
That's correct, we're hoping it can be within the right-of-way of the road, so it should be, we should look at that, and we should see if that's something we can build out.
In the DOT discussion, that could be, you know, part of that.
Absolutely. As far as parking goes, have you done parking counts based on our code? I know this is a special permit use, but do we have adequate parking? And also, I have a note that we weren't clear whether there was sufficient ADA parking.
There's two ADA spaces shown in each building.
For each building?
Yes.
Okay.
Here, and here. There is adequate parking based on the code, and there's an additional visitor parking calculation included.
Okay, so how many, just if you can just run through that with us, how many spots are required, and how many are included?
There's 89 required.
Okay.
And we're showing 100.
Okay.
Well, it says, it says here in Michelle's letter that the applicant is proposing a total of 89.
The application that we made in the letter stated that, but there's 100 spaces shown on this plan. There's additional...
I'm sorry, did you say 100, or 106?
There's 100 shown on this plan.
Okay.
There's additional five closer to the entrance on Palin Road.
Yeah, no, I see it, yeah. So does that mean you have to revise your, you have to revise your table, is that...
That's correct. I mean, it's correct that we have to revise it.
And is that, I mean, for, we've got 20, is it 27 units? 27 units in one building and 24 in the other?
Correct.
In the other?
Twenty-seven.
So the one and two bedrooms mixed in each building?
One, Building one is 27 one-bedroom units, and Building two is 24 two-bedroom units.
So they are segregated by the number of bedrooms?
Correct.
Yep.
So for the 24 two-bedroom units, is, I don't, I just don't know the ADA regulations, Pete, do we, do we know that, or does Michelle note that in her letter?
Uh, she doesn't, but she does say we need to confirm, well, no, she just said handicap per ADA, the number of parking should be required per ADA requirements, but I don't remember if ADA has a specific parking number. I think it's, I think it's the building code that determines the number of ADA spaces based upon the total parking, but we're going to...
We'll review.
We're going to have to go check that.
Let's just make sure.
Yeah.
But the other thing, excuse me, while we're on, you know, the ADA spaces, Amy, you're going to have to go look into, because it wasn't clear, it's not clear on the maps as far as, you know, the grading and, you know, the floor, floor elevations, but just looking at it quick, I think a couple of the handicap spots are going to have trouble where they are making it into, you know, the building, and keeping a 5%, 5% slope to the building.
Okay.
So that's something they're going to have to look at, but while we're on the ADA issue.
And I was just going to say the same, yeah, I was just going to say the same thing, just continuing the sidewalk discussion, we, we need to make sure that those spots are, have adequate ramp and direct access to the building, and I'm assuming the buildings, I think I recall they both have elevators?
Yes.
So wherever they're entering the building, they need to have easy and ready access to the elevator.
Okay.
The interior hallways probably also have requirements, I didn't look at the floor plan specifically, but I'm sure that the hallways also have a minimum width, similar to sidewalks.
Right.
Your sidewalks right now don't go all the way around the property? Or kind of connect if somebody wanted to go out and kind of exercise, or walk around the property, or is there, is there any intention to provide any, like, trail, or be able to connect the sidewalks, so that somebody could go out and walk if they wanted to?
So you mean like crossing the northern end of the entrance road from 52?
Well, just be able to make a loop around the buildings if they wanted to walk.
Contain around your property?
We can look at that. Yeah, adjacent to Palin Road, there's the landscaping buffer, but I think, are you just talking about around the buildings, like a loop?
Just like a little walking path or something like that, so if somebody wanted to get out and just walk around a little bit, they'd have a way to do that without being, walking in front of cars, or...
Would we be able to do a non-paved or non-concrete, like a...
Yeah, I mean, the areas that need to meet ADA requirements, ideally you'd be able to carry that through, but I think some, just something that offers some sort of pedestrian walking footpath, or something like that, I don't know, it's a pretty large property. Something to look at.
But internally, you're not talking about going out to Palin Road?
No.
Okay.
Pete, I had a note on the grading of the parking lots, was that just for the ADA spots? Or did, I don't, I didn't look at drainage, I don't know if we have any drainage calculations yet.
Yeah, we do, we just didn't get a chance to go through the stormwater pollution prevention plan, yet. But in terms of, you know, grading, one of the things, Amy, it is a little hard, you know, to decipher some of the stuff on the plan, there's, there's, there's like a lot of stuff that's on here, and it's hard like to read it, so, I mean, I think you should look at separating some of this stuff, and maybe even considering going to a larger, I think right now the scale is at 50. I mean, you can like decide, but I think either you got to go to a larger scale or separate, because you just can't, especially on the, you know, utility plan, there's between the, you know, the drainage and, you know, the grading and, you know, the labeling, you can't really tell, you know, it's just, it's just, it's just hard, you know, to read it. So, to answer your question, Lori, I think some of the grading needs, you know, to be looked at, especially, I think I had noted in the, the area of building, Building two, it didn't seem like the way that the grading was in the parking lot, that it was going to really, really direct water to where you want, you know, your drainage inlet, so I think you got to, I think you got to look at that. I think you got to add a lot more top and bottom curb, curb elevation, so you can really, you know, understand how, you know, the grading works with the first floor elevations, and that's why I think if you went to a little bit larger, larger scale, you'd be able, be able to show that.
Okay.
I don't know if you have other things that you want me to finish going through my letter, or you just kind of want to hop around her?
The only other thing I had, Pete, were the, just knowing where the bus stop would be, both for, hopefully, a loop bus stop, or...
Michelle had that in her.
And the cul-de-sac, what, how we're connecting the cul-de-sac to this entrance, whether it's pervious, pavers, or I believe it's only emergency access, but...
Correct.
It wasn't clear from what we saw in the plan, exactly whether it's just going to be grassed for the area that's not connected right now, or whether you're actually going to connect it.
I don't know, so I mean, one of Michelle's comments was a bus stop pull-off, now, do you think she meant loop bus, county loop bus, or this?
I think it's both, right? We need to know where there's going to be a school bus stop, as well as a loop bus stop.
I was wondering if it wasn't going to be in the cul-de-sac? I mean, why would you, bus coming into the site versus if they're already going down Stone Ridge?
I mean...
I don't disagree, I just, it's not shown on the plan yet, so we're not sure where...
That's a good point, I mean, I think you should reach out to the Wapinners Transportation Department, and see how they would service the site.
Say it again?
Reach out to the Wapinners School District Transportation Department, and see how they, how they, you know, would service, you know, the site, and then probably also check with the county loop bus system to see if, to see if this is, this is a spot that they'd be interested in having a stop.
Agreed.
Is there a stop that you know of on 52, in front of I Park, or?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the loop stop is now on I Park, but... On the cul-de-sac, I mean, is the cul-de-sac going to stay there? I mean, it's kind of like, it's the neighbor's cul-de-sac, it just happens to be sitting in the middle of this property, I mean, is there any plan to move or adjust that in any way?
The intent at this point was to keep it an emergency access as it is.
Okay.
But we can revisit it if...
That was, never came up, but, okay, this...
Well, in the, in the original plan, when it was commercial, I think we, the residents had wanted it to not be connected, but this is a different plan, so I think it's worth it to revisit that again, even when we were in public hearing, just to find out.
Yep.
And see. Pete, anything else from the professionals' letters?
I'm looking through, you know, Michelle's, I think we covered, covered most of hers. You talked about amenities, any, anything else? Or did you just talk about the walking trail? I know, because at our agenda meeting, we were talking about...
I think we don't, right now, there's nothing else shown, right? There's no sports court, or grilling, like barbecue grilling area, or any outdoor space usage for, for residents, right?
There's not anything depicted on there, but there is a fair amount of green space that we could do something, grilling areas, or...
Well, if you're going to do something, just, you know, show it, show it on the map if there's going to be some kind of outdoor stuff. And then looking at, you know, our memo, you know, the SWIP, we still have to go look at, we talked about the handicap, handicap spaces, the grading for handicap spaces. Michelle and I both mentioned that the dumpster for Building two seems to be located quite a bit of distance away from the building. On the site plan, Amy, it was kind of the same thing as some of the other plans, it's kind of hard to tell where you're going to have curbing.
Okay.
Maybe if you could just remove the grading on the site plan, that, that would, that would help, but if you could just look to generally clean up, you know, the plans a little bit, and as far as the site plan, at some point, we're going to need to have, you know, the dimensions of the parking areas, the islands, the radiuses, you know, all that kind of stuff. Erosion, erosion control plan, we should have phasing, phasing notes, how the job's going to be built. Stockpile locations, I mentioned before that the utility plan, you know, is crowded, so if we could do something, you know, to clean, clean that up a little bit, maybe provide as, as part of the drainage plan, provide like a table, maybe that would help to clean it up. And obviously, you need to get further along on the water and sewer, and the details to connect to our facilities.
Right, I received that information from your office.
Okay, so, I mean, I understand the plans are like preliminary, like at this point, so, that's pretty much it.
And it looks like Dutchess County also had some comments in addition to some of the others we've heard already, on the lighting plan, saying that the lighting plan across the parking lot wasn't consistent, so they provided you with the, with the recommended level of lighting, and a few recommendations for that.
Yep.
And the FAB, you should go to the FAB, too, because, you know, they need to, they need to see their plans, because they want to go look at the turning, you know, radiuses. Did you go over that already? I'm sorry. You did, okay.
Yeah, I sent my copy of the FAB notes, did you get a copy of it?
I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Yeah, because they want to look at, you know, the turning like radiuses and access and all that, all that, all that stuff.
Do you have other questions for us?
I, I'm just, I'm just requesting that we be referred to the ARB.
Okay.
You saw the architectural plans.
Okay, do we have, do we, have we seen your, yes, we've seen, we have the full elevations now, right? Because we got that with our initial discussion, I think, those haven't changed, correct?
Correct, no, I don't think there's...
Okay, so you haven't, you haven't been to the ARB yet?
No.
Okay, so we can make that referral, I think we also probably, yes, I need to declare our intent to be lead agent. Pam, do we need to do a formal referral to the ARB for these now? I think that's just a matter of course, you can, yep, just, you're ready, so just request to be put on their agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we'd also like to be scheduled for a public hearing, if possible, I know there was the timing issue with...
I think we're a little bit early in the process.
Yeah, we got to get, I think we need to get updated plans.
We've got a lot of comments, and we're asking you to revise things on the plan, I think we need to see it at least once more, based on the feedback you're receiving.
And the DOT, I think we got to get the feedback from them, I think that, you know, the access is one of the biggest items here, so I think we need to see feedback on what's going to happen there.
Okay. So you have a January public hearing, also?
We won't schedule you for public hearing yet, we need to see another round of plans from you that includes some suggestions we've made tonight.
I understand that, but, so we, we would need to be back on the agenda in December to be scheduled for the January...
Yes, if by the end of November, you can submit revised plans to us, or provide us with some feedback on the, on the information you've received tonight, we can schedule you for another discussion in December, absolutely.
Okay.
So before we close out this discussion, do I have a motion for the Planning Board to declare its intent to be lead agent?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our, on our agenda tonight, excuse me, is a discussion for the Phillips Farm Solar Farm, at 1196 Route 82.
And you appear to have brought your own easel.
Oh, you know who's going to be at the public hearing?
Good evening.
Yep, good evening, my name is Eric Redding with Bergman, and we're the engineers on the project, and as you recall, from the last time we were here, we're proposing a 4.98 megawatt community solar farm along New York State Route 82. We received your initial comments about trying to minimize the tree clearing and things like that, so we kind of settled on a spot still in the northeastern portion of the site, but we did keep it out of the tree line, and we limited the disturbance of wetlands to zero, so we're not impacting them. And we thought that this was kind of the best of both worlds for the location of the solar farm.
And it looks like the road layout changed a little bit, too.
Yes, yep, so we, yeah, so we did that to avoid wetland disturbance, that was the main reason for it. It's 20-foot wide gravel driveway, it's, it meets the fire code for turnaround every 500 feet, and it's about 2,500 feet long. And we're also constructing it in a way that it's not going to be considered impervious surface, per the DEC, so it uses a little bit larger of a stone, and it's not compacted as much. Yep, the, it's going to be fully enclosed by an eight-foot-high chain link fence. The panels themselves sit on about 17 acres, and the entire site is 181 acres or so, so the, the lot coverage is around 12%.
Question.
Yep.
The panels, there was no mention of batteries, will there be any kind of like storage facility that accompanied it?
There will not, yep.
Pure just production, okay, thank you.
Just production, and that's at the interconnect, yep.
Are they going to have to go to zoning for the fence?
I have that as a note, I just heard that, I'm not sure.
Probably, anything over six foot, you got to go to the zoning.
I'm just not sure, because this has an agricultural exemption, so I don't know whether the fence guidelines apply or not.
And I didn't know if there's any fence in the, for the solar panel.
Yeah, eight-foot-high fence, I think this came up last time, and, and I think there's some confusion on it, because I think the code requires an eight-foot-high fence in one section, but it might not in another section, so that eight-foot-high fence for solar...
Generally, generally, I think we look for four-foot in residential and six-foot in business use, but this is a different use altogether, so I know that our new solar law may, may allow for the, I think it requires appropriate fencing, so...
It does say here...
We'll just have Michelle clarify that.
It does say here, under... It does say here, under 108, I mean, 100, 100-8 G, G5 fencing requirements. All mechanical equipment, including any structure, well, structure for storage batteries shall be enclosed by an eight-foot-high fence with self-closing and self-locking gate. But that's, that just says for mechanical equipment. It doesn't, doesn't necessar, necess, I don't know, I mean, would you consider all the solar arrays as mechanical equipment?
I think you want this fenced.
I, I think so, but I, again, I would like, let's, let's, can we just have you follow up with Michelle? I know she wasn't able to be here tonight, but I just wanna make sure if we, I don't think it's an issue. I think we're all comfortable with the height of the fence, but if you need to go to the zoning board to clarify that, we can.
Yeah, and, and we're open to going seven feet, if, if that's okay, so seven or eight feet, whatever the board requires.
What, what is appropriate?
What's typical?
Typical, seven feet.
Yeah, seven, eight feet, for the most part.
Okay, all right. So let's just, and I, we can make a note of that to have Michelle reach out to you and just clarify what the, what the requirements are, and then whether or not what you're proposing requires a Z B A referral.
Okay.
Pam, can I ask you to follow up with Michelle on that one, is that all right? Thank you. Our code is contradicting itself, let's make sure we make her, I know we periodically clean up things like that, we can let her know too, that that might be something we need to address or specifically call out. Thank you.
Yep, we're clearing approximately six acres of trees. Anywhere where the panels are gonna be, or where the trees are cleared, we're gonna plant a pollinator mix, so it's friendly for, you know, bees and birds and anything like that, as well as wildlife. We're maintaining the existing vegetative buffer around the entire site as much as possible. We're open to increasing, you know, vegetative buffering, if, if needed or warranted.
Okay.
I had a question when I was reading that, and, but, could, does stuff grow underneath these panels?
Yes.
Or is it shaded so that it really?
Nope, it'll grow underneath, and.
Probably a shade mix, right? So you have.
Yeah, yep, so it can grow there, it'll still get some sun, you know, as the sun moves and whatnot. And also, you know, it's a, we don't mow it every day, so it's not gonna get low, or, you know, it's gonna, you know, dry out or anything like that. So we do let it grow, so it's kind of like a, you know, wild field.
Do these panels follow the sun?
They do not, they're fixed tilt.
They're stationary.
They're stationary.
The new pollinator mixes, they just grow to a certain height that don't interfere with the panels.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, can we just have you come to the mic, and if you don't mind, just introduce yourself for us, please.
Yeah, Steve McDonough, Amoresco, project developer. Yeah, so oftentimes, the new pollinator mixes, they grow to a certain height, say, three feet, so you don't even have to mow them, you maybe mow them at the end of the year, so they don't interfere with the panel production, but at the same time, create a nice pollinator mix for, you know, songbirds and pollinators, et cetera.
I think it's, Pete, does that answer the question about what we would do as far as drainage? It doesn't sound like these are gonna, there wouldn't be any.
As far as what?
Possible increase, right, in impervious surface?
No, that's one of, that's one of my comments. I mean, I reviewed a lot of these solar farm applications in some other, other towns. So, you know, my comment number, you know, number two, that we'll just have to follow the D E C, like guidance, you know, for solar farms. And typically, what that is, is they would go through a pre and post drainage, you know, like analysis, and assuming that, 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 that results in a 5% or less increase in post-development, like runoff, then they don't have to do anything, you know, further, other than just doing an erosion and sediment control plan. But, and then I had just asked you to also, you had documented that there was 8.5 acres of disturbance, and if we could just kind of see that broken, broken down. Okay, but so.
For clarification, like Eric said, it was 17 acres, but I believe the whole development with the road and the arrays is closer to 21 acres, just to clarify that.
But the arrays themselves are the 17, and then the rest of the disturbance is 21?
Correct.
I mean, we've, I probably, I probably reviewed five or six of these, and we haven't had one yet that had any kind of a drainage, drainage impact, because again, you know, the water runs off the panels right onto, you know, the ground, so, you know, unless, whatever. I mean, they're not gonna, so, but again, they have to go show, you know, the calc's to prove that, that they're in accordance with the D E C guidance requirements for these on stormwater.
So there isn't 21 acres of disturbance total, the, the panels themselves, where they're in the open field, won't be considered disturbance, they're just gonna be the posts driven straight into the ground, and then the panels will sit right on top of it.
Yeah, you have the access roads, you know, the posts.
Tree clearing, yep, is the main ones. I, I do expect a slight increase in runoff above the 5%, just because of the tree clearing, which we've seen on these solar farms. So if that's the case, we might have a small detention pond or something like that.
Right, well, I mean, if that is the case, then you would have to prepare, you know, the SWIP, like a full SWIP then, okay, that's fine, whatever it is, yep.
We'll try not to, but.
Have you done any review about whether these will be visible from any of the roads or neighboring, neighboring properties? Like, do, do you have a sense? I, I know sometimes these can have a glare to them, so I'm just wondering whether you've looked at that, or?
Yeah, well, as far as the glare goes, they'll be facing away from the neighborhood north of the arrays, so the, the panels will be facing, facing south. At the same time, they're designed to absorb as much sunlight as possible, so they only refract maybe 2% of the sunlight, which is less than most household windows. So they're really designed to have minimal glare. And as far as the butters, we actually had a, I sent out letters to the immediate neighbors on.
I'm thinking.
The north side here, as well as across from access road. So we actually scheduled some time with the neighbors to get their feedback on any concerns about the arrays.
I think we sent out 14 letters, we had one, one household show up, and they didn't seem too concerned, they're more interested in the project itself, so.
Okay. What about from the roadways, as you look to the south? Like, is there any, any roadways where they're gonna see these arrays, or there, there's a potential for glare from them?
As far, in, just driving the roadways, we don't anticipate any point of view on these. And as far as glare goes, we built these, you know, Amoresco has built them next to airports, you know, and they don't impact airports, so it's really not a concern from a visual standpoint or a driver safety standpoint. Is that the concern, driver safety, or?
Yeah, I mean, we have just, especially at different times of the year, I know just driving on Route 52 right now, at the, at the right time, you, you almost can't see just from the glare reflecting off pavement on the road. I'm just wondering whether you have any roads that are gonna be potentially seeing a different glare pattern than their cars are used to, that sort of thing.
Yeah, we don't anticipate that, but I think one of the comments that Michelle added into her list was to get some point of view, you know, visual impact.
Line of sight, line of sight profiles from.
Yeah, yeah, we're open to that, we don't think there's gonna be much of an impact, except maybe, you know, a few areas on this side where just in some of these roads, you know, may have a little line of sight up to that field.
But they're not facing in that direction though, right? So they're just looking at the, yeah.
But these are comparable to like the household ones, like, for example, I have them on my roof.
Exactly.
They, there, there's no glare coming off of it.
Yeah, yeah. Again, they, they reflect 2% of the sunlight that hits them.
Your roof isn't eight to 12 feet off the ground, right? Your roof is a lot higher than that.
Right, but even, what I'm saying is, even on sunny days, when you're up the hill from it, you look down on it, it isn't, there, there's no glare, if it is the same materials.
Is it residential grade?
Because they're ours, yeah.
These are, you know, this is, this area is up on a hill, you know, away from the road, this is set back, how many feet from the road, would you say?
Oh.
Yeah, cause that's 82 going on the left side.
Yeah, it's huge. Set back about 600 feet or so from the, the main road, so it's, it's quite a distance out there.
And all this land retains its agricultural exemption, correct?
Well, I'm actually speaking with Kathy Martin from East Fishkill, and also Eric from the county board, so we're actually in discussion about that right now. So it's to be determined whether it'll keep the ag exemption or not.
Okay.
We're still working through that.
Are, are you gonna own the land, or are you leasing the land?
We're gonna lease the land from the Phillips.
Okay.
Is there a plan to remove them, if need be?
Absolutely, there's.
Remediation?
I'm pretty sure we submitted a decommissioning plan. So typically, we fund an escrow, you know, in year 20 of, of the decommissioning plan, so we start, you know, payments into this escrow. So we have sufficient funds at the end of year 25 to remove all the, all the panels and all the infrastructure related to that.
And who tends to hold that escrow?
Typically, it's, it's with the town itself, yeah, so we'll work with the town to.
You submitted that with the application, the decommissioning?
We submitted the, okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
We have it, we could submit it, you know, it's ready to go.
Right, yeah, cause I didn't.
I think we'd wanna see that.
Okay.
So.
Sorry, go ahead, Jason.
Is there a plan to decommission it, or do you just replace the panels and continue on?
Well, at the end of the 25-year life, it gets decommissioned.
So you wouldn't replace the panels, it would just go away?
We'll remove everything at the end of, yeah, the end of life.
I'm just saying, wouldn't you put new panels in place?
Potentially, if technology changes, you know, in the next five, 10 years, and panels become that more, that much more efficient, where it makes sense to, you know, add new panels, and as long as it makes sense to extend the lease with the Phillips, you know, that may occur, but right now, the plan is to decommission the entire project at the end of 25 years.
So do people buying into this know that there's a 20-year lifespan to this?
Correct, 25-year lifespan.
25-year lifespan.
Correct, yeah.
I have a question for Pete. I, I seem to recall in one of the, one of the memorandums, there was a comment about the maintenance plan. Did that, that dealt with the, how were they gonna mow underneath these, which I think has already been touched? There was no other aspect to the maintenance plan?
Yeah, that was in Michelle's comment, that was one thing we addressed at our agenda meeting, and they had talked about the pollinator mix, in terms of what was gonna be underneath, you know, the panels. Her comment was applicant develop, implement, maintain native vegetation pursuant to a vegetation management plan.
So that addressed it then, and there's, I just wanted to make sure there was no aspect of that that was, that was left out.
I mean, we need to get information on it, whether it's in the form of notes on the map, I forget, on the couple that we, that I've been involved in, whether there was an actual vegetation manage, management plan. Do you guys typically do a?
We don't typically do that, but we do have the seed mix shown on the plan.
Seed mix shown on the plans for, okay.
Yep, yep, and the different percentages of each seed.
Okay.
And, and with the comment that it doesn't require regular mowing?
No.
Typically, you know, once a year, yeah, once a year or so, we'd, we'd mow it.
So there's no aspect of that that's gonna rise and stalk the earth at some later date, right?
It's gonna what?
It's gonna rise and stalk the earth at some.
Oh, no, no, no. I think that they're designed, they're designed, like you say, to only, to only grow a certain, certain height.
Yeah, it affects the production of the array, so we, you know, we, it's in our best interest to keep it maintained.
Is that something that you have to renew every year, or once you've done that initial planting, does it just tend to renew itself?
It'll tend to renew itself, yeah, yeah, they're perennials, you know, it's a, it's a, you know, native grass, you know, wildflower, you know, pollinator mix typically.
It's not like you're mowing it, and then the next year, you have to reseed it, you're just gonna seed it the first time, and it should just, in perpetuity?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that's kind of what we're looking for, too, low maintenance, good for wildlife, is kind of the, where we'd like to be.
And a lot of it, you know, is already established, so we won't necessarily be disturbed in a large area, so the areas that we have to grade, obviously, we'd be reseeding, but a lot of the area already has, you know, natural vegetation, and it's a, took a walk up there, is, you know, really nice, yeah, mix of, you know, grasses and flowers and.
You're gonna have to strip that, though, anyways.
Not, not all of it, it was only the areas that we would have to regrade, is that correct, Eric?
Yeah, that's correct.
What's the typical cost to decommission?
I know on a similar project we're working on up in, up in the Glover'sville area, I believe it's around like $200, $250,000.
For a similar size?
Similar size, yeah, it's a five-megawatt project, yep.
With no salvage?
There, there's guidance documents from NICE Serta that has, you know, indications of what decommissioning costs are, so I could share that with the, with the department if they need it.
The assumption would be, though, that you'd be removing the equipment, you wouldn't change the, you wouldn't be taking the soil or anything like that and regrade, you'd just leave the, the vegetation as it is and remove your equipment, remove the road.
And obviously, would repair any damage during the removal of the panels to, you know, regrade, reseed, you know, et cetera.
Okay, all right. Pete, I have a note that we needed to review the stormwater and pollution prevention plan before we can schedule this for a public hearing, is that?
Well, we don't have one yet, so they have to, you know, submit one first. I mean, I think we're, I think there's some things that, you know, you, that, you know, we all wanna see before we, before we get around to a, a public hearing, especially on the visual. You know, Michelle had said in her memo about getting several line of sight, you know, profiles. So I think what you guys should do is contact, and, contact her, see where she'd like to see them, and then you could provide that in your next submission. She also talked about a screening and landscaping plan. I know that may be kind of hard to like accomplish, cause these things, these things are gonna be sitting up on the hill, right? So, but again, you, you have to go work with her on that.
Okay, yeah, we've done.
There's no evening lighting with this or anything, right?
No lighting at all.
And none, none on the road or anything like that?
Nope, none at all. Yeah, we've done visual E A Fs where we've taken actual photos from, say, along the road, and we would do a before of what it looks like, and then we'd actually add in panels of what it would look like.
I think that's exactly what she's looking for.
Okay.
What we're looking for.
Yeah, and we'll confirm that with her.
The, the tree thing that we're looking at, that is essentially the, the ridge line, right? When I've looked at it.
Yes.
It's, it's not the, the lower trees, it's the upper one, that is the ridge line, so you would see from there to your, where your pen is over to the left, would be what you would see driving down 82, and that would be pretty much it.
Yep, and then it goes up, and then it flattens out on the top, yep, so you wouldn't see much from there.
All right, so we have, we have the fence, we need to clarify the fence with you, and make sure if you need a Z B A referral, we're, we're doing that. We're looking for the drainage plan.
SWIP, yep.
SWIP, sorry. And the line of sight profiles and a landscape screening for the rest of the disturbance.
And do you have, yeah, I was gonna say, on the landscape and screening, is there something that the board would like to see for that, or kind of leave it up to us to present?
Typically, Michelle, as, as our planner, would give you some recommendations, because she, she reviews all of the landscaping plans for our site plans. And then you also were gonna give us the information, if it's not already in your application, on the decommissioning plan? As well as, I don't think we, do we have the full verticals on what the actual panels themselves are gonna look like?
No, we asked for that, that.
And I have that.
Detail.
It just wasn't in any, we didn't find it in any of the layers we currently have.
Yep, yep, it's gonna be on the next mission.
Okay. All right, do you have other questions for us?
I think I'm all set, except for the submission deadline, so it, we can probably get the SWIP in by Wednesday. The visual E A F might have to follow behind that for December's meeting, so maybe that's something.
So for the December meeting, we'd want you to have everything in by November 30th. I mean, if you, if you submit a portion of it, that's what we would review in the December meeting. If there are things you submit after the end of the month, our professionals won't have had time to review them, and we won't have had time to review them, so that's why we give you them at month-end deadline.
All right, and with the visual E F, if we don't submit it by the end of the 30th, and we submit it, or bring it before the December meeting, would we still be able to schedule the public hearing for January?
Assuming nothing unusual within them, I would think so, but again, that's dependent on, there's quite a few other things you're gonna, you're gonna also need to submit, so we wanna make sure that your application's complete, from the planning board's perspective, before we schedule it.
Okay, yep, that makes sense. Do you have any other questions?
Oh, sorry, Pam.
The 30th is the Saturday and we're closed on the 29th.
So are you hearing?
You're hearing now.
So the 27th is our last day to submit. That's a week from today.
Yep, Wednesday.
Okay.
One other thing.
Thank you, Pam.
I'm sorry.
I don't think he's working either.
One other, so where's your main access coming out to? Okay, so you'll need to contact the Department, Department of Transportation?
Yes.
State Department of Transportation for your access, too?
Yep, correct.
Okay. And then.
There's no, I'm sorry, Pete.
Is there, is there, I assume there's, that there's some kind of a farm road access there now or something like that or no?
I believe so.
No?
It's a relocated, yeah.
Okay. All right, so you'll have to go.
It's a weird angle that it's coming in at.
Pardon?
There's no transmission line that's coming.
There'll be.
Oh, there will be, yeah.
There'll be a couple of utility poles along here, so I think there's five, four or five utility poles.
Okay.
Yeah, just utility poles that'll interconnect.
But it ends on property. It's not like there's, you know, the.
Can we just, I'm sorry, it's hard for us to, I know we can hear you, but we just need you.
Going over the horizon. There's no, it's, it just taps in to the, right there, correct?
Correct, yeah, right at the road, correct.
One other thing, too, that I had was, did you need an access road to get to the arrays that are in the northern area of the site? No?
Yeah, they just have to make sure we have access to the equipment pads.
Okay.
And the last equipment pad is right, where it is right now, at the end of the road, and that can serve the rest of the panels.
Okay.
And I think you also commented on the grade. There are racking systems that allow you to have, you know, build on steep slopes, you know, 30, 35 degrees, but will likely, you know, be grading more of this area versus using those steeper, you know, racking technologies.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I just hadn't really, I hadn't, I hadn't seen any applications that had them on, you know, fairly steep slopes like that, so.
Yeah, it's possible. It's just a little more expensive, yeah.
Yeah, you can do anything with unlimited money.
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, thank you.
And could you declare that your intent to seek lead agency tonight or is that something we can't do?
I don't.
You could probably do the motion for that. I don't think we're ready to circulate without the, without the drainage plan, right? Without the SWIP?
Well, Michelle didn't have any comments on the EAF. I think we should just make sure that she really took a look at it. I, the only thing that I, that I wanted was just a breakdown on the 8.57 acres of disturbed area. So, I mean.
If we hold that off until December 17th, you'd still, we'd still be able to.
It's not gonna hurt anything.
Assuming everything's in line, we'd still be able to open the public hearing on January 21st. You'd just have a few days where we'd need to make sure the circulation gets out to give you the 30-day submission.
Okay.
And once we declare the intent, I've forgotten, how much time do we need before we can declare ourselves lead agent? Allow 30 days?
Yeah, when we circulate, yep, 30 days.
30 or 60. Thank you.
Very good. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Sorry, just one other question for myself. So if we're missing a couple of items by the end of, or so be it November 27th, I assume, for example, the line of impact visuals, we'll still be able to submit and then?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll still be able to.
And you'd be able to discuss on the 17th, yes.
Okay, and then request a public hearing for January?
It would, again, depend how much you're missing on the 27th. We wanna make sure our professionals have had time to review the bulk of the application. I think that something like the visuals, we would be able to look at even during the meeting itself and make sure there's nothing unexpected, but if you don't have the drainage plan in or something else like that is missing, I'd be more concerned.
Okay, understood. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was the last item on our agenda for this evening. Do I?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great Thanksgiving.